Good evening. My watch just said it is six o'clock, so it is time to start for all those people that are already here. So, I'm Diana Owens and I'm with the American Association of University Women, the Lompoc-Vandenberg Branch, and this is the last of our four forums that we have hosted this year, and so there's kind of a celebration after this one, okay? So first of all, if you've been to the others, you already know this speech, but for those of you that this is your first time, I want to let you know a little bit about AAUW. We have been doing these forums for over fifty years. We were chartered in 1964, and according to the kind of old scrapbooks I have in my garage, they started forums right away. There wasn't a League of Women Voters here, and so AAUW decided, in order for the community to be informed about the candidates and about the issues, that they would undertake that devotion to good government and sponsor forums. So that's what happened. And so, not all those people are with us now, of course, but the rest of us have carried on, and here we are again. So I think, so it's been actually about fifty-four years, so. So, we're well, ready to take on the next year. So, AAUW was formed in 1881, and it was formed by seventeen young women who had gone to college, and that wasn't very common at the time, so they needed somebody to talk to. So, they got together and was on the east coast, so seventeen of these women got together to decide what to do, and from those seventeen women, we have thousands and thousands of members across the United States and hundreds of branches, so, and we're just one of those. But, anyway, our issues, our mission is equity for women and girls, and we are, we are a nonpartisan group, but we do get involved with issues. So, any issue that is really supportive of women and girls and families, AAUW will be there. But we are nonpartisan, so we don't support candidates. So, first of all, I'd like to thank the city of Lompoc for letting us use these beautiful chambers for the fourth time, and they've changed everything so that it fits, and it's being taped by Tap TV. It's actually live, so those people that couldn't come tonight can watch it. It won't be on the radio, but it will be shown on tape after this, so if you want to watch it again, you can do that. So, we're hoping that everybody has already registered to vote, but you have until October 22nd, and I think we have some forums here that you can use to sign up online, so we have that here for you to do. We don't have anybody here to register you, but you could do that. So, let's go, let's get started. First of all, I want to thank all the candidates for coming, and I want to ask you, when you answer the questions and give your opening statements and closing statements, if you would please stand, so that the audience can see you better, and your mics will pick up your voice very, very well, so don't worry about that. Just be sure the mic is up, so you're ready for that. So, thank you all for coming, and what we've done tonight is we have arranged the table so that the candidates running for the two-year term are at this end, and there are three. There's Mr. Skinner, Mr. Monsier, and Mr. Heath, so, Dr. Heath. So, they're, the three of them are at this end, so, because I think that's been a little hard for people to figure out, who's running for the two-year term and who's running for the four-year term? So, we thought if we grouped you together, it would be easier for people to see. So, the four-year term, the four people that are running for that, for those two seats, and this is just one seat here, right? One seat for two years, two seats for four years, and we have Ms. Andrews, Ms. Grahalva, Mr. Straight, and Ms. Nancy Schuler-Jones. Right, right. So, and I also want to let you know that Gloria Grahalva is one of our AAUW members, so just want to be clear about that. We're not, we're not really supporting her, too bad, Gloria. But we can't do that. Right, right, so. Okay, so, let's get on with the format for tonight. The format for tonight is that we will have two-minute introductory statements, and the order will be, and the order that they're seating has been determined by a drawing, so they drew numbers, and that's why they're sitting in those particular chairs. I'm going to ask questions of the candidates, and they have two minutes to answer, and we won't have any rebuttals tonight, because we want to finish everything and give time to the audience to ask questions. And there will be one final question that will be a surprise, so that's always kind of fun, okay? And there won't be any rebuttal for that one either, okay? And we won't have any applause or any comments from the audience until I request it. And please silence your cellphones, if you haven't already done that. I know nobody ever calls you at this time of night, but guess what? They might tonight, right? So, just be sure to silence your cellphones. Okay, and then, after we've asked those questions, we're going to take a break for about ten minutes, and you all have been given a card that you can write your questions down on, so write them ahead of time as they come to you, or, yeah, and we'll pick, Lorraine will pick them up, AAUW will look for duplicates, and we will ask as many questions as we can when we finish, when we come back together. We'll have two-minute answers to the audience's questions, and we'll have a one-minute closing statement, and by that time, you know, one minute will be fine, because you'll have talked and talked and talked, so it'll be okay. Okay. So, we're going to have the two-minute opening statements, and we're going to start at this end and just go to that end, and then I'll mix them up after that, but, and so I'll keep track of that, so. So, Mr. Skinner, would you please give us your two-minute opening statement?
All right. I didn't know.
You drew number one, right?
My name is Alex Skinner, and I'm running for Lompoc Unified School District, two-year term. The reason that I'm running for this position is actually I wanted to initially begin to really do a little bit of research into what the position really is about, what the position of responsibility and duties are. I found myself getting more and more involved in what really needs to be happening with the position. What do, my background basically entails, I was born and raised in Louisiana, my father and mother were individuals that needed hard work. My dad was a small league player, my mother started out basically being seen as a worker way up and became an art nurse, and put basically seven to ten kids through school. And I was one of those that did not, you know, complete a degree program, like decided to go into military. From there, the military decided to, you know, bring me on out to California, they are separated by myself, being a person that had a good working knowledge in law enforcement, you know, getting on with the Department of Justice, worked twenty-six years there in the recent time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Skinner. Mr. Monsier?
Good evening. My name is Timothy Monsier. Most people that know me call me Tim. I've lived here for about forty years. My family came over from the valley in 1961. My uncle became the first locksmith of the Lompoc Unified School District. Both of them were teachers, he taught at Cabrillo, and she taught at Crestillo, both retired recently. My education really started after I graduated from Tap High School in 1961, and I went, I didn't, and started to pursue ten years of college education. I taught school for over thirty-five years and have learned a great deal from it, and just as a parent who's here to my mother said, this really is all about the kids, ensuring that they have a good education and opportunities to develop, just as I did. I have a wife that's the oldest of twelve. We have six grandchildren, three children, most of them are attending Lompoc schools. The smallest one, Abby, she's only three, and will start next year here in school, right down the street from where I live. And I, and I do live right close to the district office, so I can literally walk My education allowed me to teach a variety of subjects. I'm certified in a number of states, Nevada, Idaho, California for forty years, also New York, Penn Wester. I'm sorry, I don't have any more time. There's a lot that goes on, so.
Okay, okay, thank you, and I want to remind you all to turn on your microphones. Do you see the green light? Okay, thank you, thank you. Dr. Heath?
Good evening. My name is Bill Heath, and I'm seeking reelection for the two-year short term. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'd like to thank the AAUW for putting this on. I'd like to express my admiration for fellow candidates and grateful for their willingness to serve. That's not, I'm not loud enough yet? Sorry. Okay. So, good luck to all the candidates. I was born and raised in Lompoc. I attended all the LUSD schools throughout my time here as a child and young man. Some of my teachers are here present. I'm grateful for them. I have five siblings that also went through the schools here, and we all loved the experience we had here, growing up in Lompoc and attending the schools. I'm a general dentist. I've been in practice in Lompoc since 1992. Many years ago, I stood up at a big meeting and was encouraged then to run for school board. I think that planted the seed, but I didn't have time then, but four years ago, I decided to, and I've enjoyed the time that I've had on the board. I'm married, I've been married for over thirty-one years, and I have six children, four of which have graduated from Cabrillo High School, and two presently attend Cabrillo High School. I'm grateful for the teachers, the staff, all that are involved in the education of my children. I'm grateful for those that blessed my life. My football and wrestling coach, Dave Long, is here, and his wife, and I learned a lot through him. I have a great respect for those who are involved in education, and it's an important part of our, our society, to allow people to learn and grow and increase their ability to be self-reliant. It's an essential part of that. So, I have experience in other forms of leadership. I, I'm, have important positions in my church. I've been a scout master for the Boy Scouts. I have coached youth sports, and it's a pleasure to be with you. Have a good evening, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Andrews?
I'm Deb Andrews. I'm also a mom, a mad mom. I've dedicated the last thirty years of my life to improved and effective curriculum and instruction, following my son's experiences in public schools. I was born in Oak Park, Illinois, and lived there about eight years prior to my dad's transfer to Omaha, Nebraska. Forty years and twenty-four years of marriage in Omaha, I divorced and moved to Portland, Oregon. I spent six years in Oregon, ten years back in Lincoln, Nebraska, and have lived in Lompoc about a year and a half, following my son's move here. At kindergarten curriculum night in our wealthy public school district in Omaha, I learned about magic spelling, no relation to accurate spelling. During a series of conferences in that wealthy district with professional educators and administrators, I was advised my son's recent increasing classroom behavior problems in fourth grade stemmed from his overuse of his computer at home after school. We did not own a computer. I moved him to a poor public school district in Iowa, seventeen miles one way from our home. That district spent half as much per student. As a result of effective and self-paced curriculum, my son was a freshman in college and high school at the same time. He spent one half-day at each, was on the dean's list, and honor roll simultaneously. He began doing research for NASA at age fourteen and went on to achieve his PhD in chemical engineering. I'm a candidate for LUSD school board to open the doors for all students to reach their greatest potential and pursue their individual goals.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Andrews. Ms. Grahalva?
My name is Gloria Grahalva. Thank you, AAUW, for hosting the forum and to the community for being here today. I'm proud to call myself a Lompoc native. I'm just a kid from North J Street and who's a product of Lompoc schools, as are my nine siblings, two children, and numerous nephews and nieces. I'm an alumni of Allen Hancock College. I have a bachelor's of business administration from Branman University, and a master of science in education with an emphasis in school business leadership from Wilkes University. I'm also a certified chief business official from the California Association of School Business Officials. I've worked in education for fourteen years as a classified employee and have experience in school site and district office. My experiences provided me with the skills, knowledge, and wisdom to serve the staff and students of our community, and my education has provided me with the formal training and policies, procedures, and regulations. I'm currently an appointed member of the school board, and I'm a chief business official at Guadalupe Union School District, and I realize that my education and experience make me a valuable asset to the board by being able to advocate for students and their families. I've developed analytical leadership and collaborative skills to move the district forward. I value the beliefs and priorities of the community and accept the responsibility of full transparency and accountability to the community regarding student achievement. My heritage in Lompoc has provided me the ability to understand the unique diversity of third-generation Hispanic with family and friends with whom I can converse in Spanish, who have served in the military and who have chosen to make Lompoc their home. I believe our children deserve the best education possible so that they can go to college and return to be contributing members of the society in this community with the same pride that I have for Lompoc.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Straight?
Hi, I'm Steve Straight, and I'm saying this advisedly. I've spent my whole adult life in Lompoc, California. My honeymoon was a drive from Seattle, Washington, to here. My wife had signed a contract, which was what got me here. I began teaching not long after that, and I taught here for roughly twenty-three years. I taught K through six, and then I, I was a math specialist in grades K through three, and then I finished off teaching first, second, and third grade at Buena Vista. During that, I took a hiatus in there and went into business and owned two different stores and was in the building of houses business and was in real estate, and then also during that twenty-year time, I got on the school board, and so I served about thirteen years there, and then went back to teaching, and here I am again. And my whole life has revolved around children, my whole adult life. I've taught, I've been on the boards of directors of Little League and Babe Ruth, and have participated in, as a scholarship chairman and worker with the Elks, with the Lions, with the American GI Forum, and so, basically, my three children went through this school system. They're all successes, for which I'm totally grateful, and I feel that I owe back to this community and to this school system what's been given to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Schuler-Jones?
Thank you. I just want to thank the AAUW for having this forum tonight and having the opportunity to speak to the audience, the greater audience in Lompoc, and when I told my daughter I was speaking here, she said, "Oh, be sure and thank AAUW for the scholarship that I received back in 2000." So, thank you for her. My name, Nancy Schuler-Jones. I've been a Lompoc resident for thirty-two years. I've taught in the schools here, K through fifth, for twenty-four point four-three years, almost twenty-five. My husband is here, he's, we was a ranger for twenty-one years at La París de Ma Mission. He's substituting now in some of the high school, in the high schools. My two children went through Lompoc schools, both graduated from Cabrillo High School, both have graduated from Cal Poly. My daughter has her MBA from Cal Poly, and have both gone on to be successful in their careers, and it's nice, my son's a winemaker, so that doesn't hurt. So, I've been a resident here for a long time, and I know a lot of you out there with friendly faces smiling like me, which I appreciate. I have worked in the schools, so I know what goes on in the schools, I know what happens at school sites. I know how wonderful it can be at the school site when your family is there with all the teachers and everyone, and I'm all about the kids. I want the best for our kids and every child to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll get into the questions that you were given, so you've, you should, you know, you are prepared for these questions, right? So, the first question's going to be about Title IX, which is very important to AAUW, and if you want to learn more about Title IX, we have some handouts in the back here for you to take home, because it's, it's a subject that's a little complicated, and so, you know, if you need, if you need more help with that, you, we have those handouts there. If you run out of the handouts, you need, you just need to go to our website, auw.org, to get, to print them off. Okay, so, this question, Mr. Monsier, you'll answer first, okay? Okay. "Title IX of the Education Amendment of 1972 is the federal law that prohibits sex discrimination in education. It covers women and men, girls and boys, and staff and students in any educational institution or program that receives federal funds. Give us an example of how you will enforce the components of Title IX and other civil rights laws that must be upheld in our public schools." So, Mr. Monsier?
The Office of Civil Rights in San Francisco has the legal authority to enforce Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. It's the only legal authority that does. We can listen to people's concerns, we can give them some advice. They do have other opportunities besides the OCR. That office is one of several offices within the United States Department of Education. Here, again, this is one reason why it's so important, then, that we have supportive people in, in Washington DC to support and to defend people with concerns about their civil liberties. This office enforces Title IX by investigating complaints, conducting compliance reviews, and providing technical assistance, usually an institution that has need, needs found to have violated someone's civil rights and those laws inclusively, follow an investigation process that has the opportunity to remedy the violation itself voluntarily. Those institutions which don't comply with the law are then subject to prosecution. A complainant of sex discrimination may file a separate lawsuit, and that is distinctively different than filing an OCR complaint. An individual filing a lawsuit must be the alleged victim of discrimination. In contrast, anyone may file a complaint with OCR. Depending on the plaintiff's allegations, the courts may order specific remedies. The courts may also award monetary damage under Title IX to victims of sex discrimination. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Heath?
As a board member, I believe it's important that we uphold Title IX and other civil rights, and if elected to continue, I intend to uphold the civil rights of all students and employees. I decided to focus on examples that I know of that apply to Title IX. At Cabrillo High School, recently, there was a young woman that wanted to play football. She played football. I think her Title IX rights were allowed. There were some challenges, but I don't think it had to do with the, the actual playing of football. I think it had to do with some supervision problems. So, grateful that the district upheld Title IX in that instance. Another example that currently exists in our district has to do with girls participating in wrestling. I spoke recently with a Cabrillo wrestling coach, and he said this is a, a challenge, yet the girls are allowed to participate. Presently, we do not have a girls' wrestling team in our district. There is one school, I think, in our general area that has a team. When they go beyond this area, there are tournaments for girls. So, what would I do as a board member? I would advocate that we consider having a girls' wrestling team, so that could, could grow, so that it's equal. In the meantime, we let them participate with the young men, however they can. There are some challenges there that the coach expressed to me, but we're working through, and I'm proud that we're allowing, upholding the civil rights of our young women in these sports. So, generally, I, I disagree with discrimination on the basis of race, creed, religion, sex, age, disability, and that tolerance needs to prevail on both sides with regard to issues regarding our, our civil rights. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Andrews?
To prohibit discrimination based on sex, race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic level, I would focus on policies and practices in which learning and achievement for all are the expectation and the stated goal. As it stands, schools are racist, sexist, and elitist. According to the 2017 California National Assessment of Educational Progress for eighth-grade students, just eighteen percent of black students are proficient at reading. Nineteen percent of Hispanic and just nineteen percent of poor children eligible for the school lunch program are proficient at reading. For math, it's even worse. Just ten percent of black students are proficient at math. Fifteen percent of Hispanics and just fifteen percent of poor children eligible for a school lunch program are proficient at math. A visit to LUSD classrooms and review of materials reveals students are not being taught how to read. Teachers don't know how. Phonics and only phonics should be presented. LUSD promotes sight words which retard the ability to read. LUSD uses common core math curriculum known to be ineffective. The proposed illustrative math follows the same crippling path to failure. Families from Vandenberg testified they are leaving Lompoc to escape the culture of inappropriate sexual behavior in LUSD schools. A review of the LUSD sexuality education curriculum advocates for youth reveals a guideline for grooming children for sex. Creating predators and victims. Expect and enforce fair and equal treatment for all. Elevate no group over another. Practice mutual respect and guard the dignity of all.
Thank you. Ms. Grahalva?
I have a son and a daughter. I want and expect them to have the same educational employment opportunities. As a parent, community, and board member, I'm responsible for ensuring that our employees and children are not subjected to discrimination and that all of their civil rights are protected. As a board member, I would request breakdowns of which employees are hired and demographics of our students. This information can be analyzed to verify that all of our subgroups, subgroups are provided with equal access to educational and extracurricular opportunities outlined in Title IX. I should also be able to request academic data that is broken down in a variety of ways, so we can see how we are servicing our English learners and special and special education students, while also showing how our various ethnicities are performing. We need to advocate for all our kids, and sometimes there are certain kids that need a little more help to be successful. I would uphold board policies by participating in regular review, updating, and implementation of the policies that ensure compliance with the components of Title IX in the California Education Code. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Straight.
Let me start with a little story that'll tell you how I feel about this and my history with it. Our youngest daughter, most of the children in our neighborhood were boys that were her age, and she played with them and loved to play soccer, and they played out in our front yard just daily. Well, as she grew up, she played in the boys' soccer leagues in Lompoc. And as she got to be about 11 years old, she made the All-Star team, and they were going to play in the district tournament up in Paso Robles. And one night, she came home crying, and I said, "What's the matter?" She said, "They won't let me play." And I said, "Why not?" And she said, "The coach says, 'Because I'm a girl.'" And I said, "Oh, really?" And so, I called the director of the tournament up in Paso Robles, and I said, "Is this true that she can't play?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "Is it because she's a girl?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "What's the problem?" And he said, "Well, we're real worried about injuries." And I said, "Look, I'll give you my word. She won't hurt anybody." And he got real quiet, and I said, "Do you want to talk some more to me, or do you want to talk to my attorney?" He said, "She can play," and she did. And, anyway, that was a, she has grown up and has been real tuned in to women's issues all her life, and she is now, her title is Director of Institutional Analysis at UCLA, and which is concerned with equality and all of that on the staff and with the student body and that. I just, I think my history in the Lompoc School District shows that I have respected the rights of those who need my respect, and I'd ask you to vote for me for that.
Thank you. Ms. Shuler-Jones.
Thank you. Title IX is especially important to me because it was passed in 1972, and I was a junior in high school. And it meant that, for the first time, we had a girls' tennis team, and we had a girls' basketball team, and we got to ride a school bus. And we were actually part of the CIF contingency then, and there weren't a lot of us because it wasn't such a big deal that children had, girls had an opportunity to participate before that. But I found an interesting statistic. As of 2006, it pointed to a large increase in the number of women participating in athletics on both the high school and college level. The number of women in high school sports increased by a factor of nine, while the number of women in college sports had increased by more than 450%. So, starting out early where children have an equal opportunity to access programs academically, sports, whatever it may be, leads to a lifelong continuance of their education and being able to express their talents. It's, it's important that we support their civil rights in that, and I'm glad to see that Dr. Heath was talking about the wrestling team. That's a very good example of how the board can work together with all the interested parties to come up with a solution to help figure out how, how we can solve that problem and how everyone can participate and do it in the, in the right way, so everyone gets what they need for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Skinner.
All right. With respect to Title IX, Title IX really is, you know, a law that really is tethered to the, I'm going to, you know, mention a different law, which is Title VIII, 1642, which is governed by EEOC. In most employment situations...
Thank you.
In most employment situations, that is the law that is, that is utilized with that. Title IX, however, the enforcement agency that goes over that basically puts a person into a situation where they're going to probably eventually need a lawyer. So, what does that mean? We need to make sure that individuals that, you know, come forth with their discriminatory claims, those, those claims are actually taken seriously first off. Each and every claim has to be taken seriously. That's how you, you first off deal, deal with situations. After hearing all these answers, it's really nice to know that we have a very proactive system here with the LUSD School Board interacting and taking on each of those complaints very seriously. My objective would be to continue with that. Not only continue that, but also build on that by making sure that this, this system is user-friendly. You can't have complaints come up just because I'm a girl, just because I'm black, just because, you know, my race, religion, or creed. That's what I believe I'm being held back in. That simply cannot be a complaint that goes overlooked and have that person walking away with a low self-esteem. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I will remind the candidates once again, be sure you turn your mics on when you start to speak. Thank you. Okay, second question, and we'll begin with Dr. Heath with this question. AAU advocates for freedom from violence and fear of violence, including hate crimes in homes, school, workplaces, and communities. In view of the tragic and highly-publicized recent school shootings, what will you do to ensure that LUSD keeps its students safe and is supporting the mental and emotional well-being of its students?
Presently, our district utilizes law enforcement, certain barriers, and codes of conduct that I think help keep our students safe. Upholding these codes of conduct, I think, is essential for the safety and well-being of our, our students in our schools. Enforcing the rules regarding drugs, and weapons, and language, and dress, and other codes of conduct, I think, need to be followed. And I think the adults on our campuses, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, all need to do the same, that they also dress appropriately, that they use good language, that they uphold other codes of conduct that they, they should uphold, so they can be examples for our youth. Next, I think we need to do all we can to provide opportunities for our students in our district to improve their self-image and self-worth by a variety of things. There's lots of activities they can engage in and build talents and opportunities to serve. We can't tolerate any bullying or isolation of individuals, targeting of individuals. We need to get them involved in positive things, whatever it is. And our district has a wide variety of opportunities. I think if counselors and teachers or anybody involved in, in our schools see that there's an individual that doesn't have that in their life, we need to provide a means by which we can encourage that or help that along, because most of the violent acts that happen in our country are committed by those who have a low self-esteem or some sort of mental illness. And things like service and engagement and positive activities will build and uplift the children and will keep our schools safe. So, those are my thoughts regarding keeping our children free from violence and safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Andrews.
First and foremost, just as you would at home, restrict access. Fencing, locked gates and doors, crash bars, so you can always get out. The most effective way to support mental and emotional well-being of students is to keep them positively, intellectually engaged. Effective challenging curriculum in mutually respectful classrooms, which safeguard the dignity of all, goes a long way to ensure a safe learning environment. If curriculum is ineffective, causes confusion, boredom, or limited learning, intense frustration may result. Opening the door to anger and neurosis. When curriculum is ineffective or not at the appropriate level for the child, yet he is confined to the classroom seat, students either implode or explode. Obvious behavior problems or silent anguish. Various interventions are implemented, mostly negative. Curriculum analysis should be the first intervention always. The range in the distribution of IQ is the same throughout the population, regardless of race, ethnicity, sex, or socioeconomic level, with one exception, prison. There are five times as many highly gifted in prison as should be there by chance. A deputy county attorney sent, sent a youth with an IQ over 140, genius level, to the youth detention center each year she served in that capacity. Children are entering the school system smarter than ever before, while at the same time, curriculum is being dumbed down. The resulting gap is not just a danger to our children's safety, to our nation as well. We are a nation at risk.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Grahova.
The safety of our children is a top priority. Unfortunately, with every crisis, there's opportunity, because the entire nation is mobilizing to address student safety. I'm glad we have a responsive community in which districts, the district partners with the city and county law enforcement to provide training and education on safety. As a board member, I would ensure that the resources are continued to be utilized to teach our students and staff. I'm in full, full support of school fencing, screening, drills at every campus, and communication from site administrators to the district and to the board. In addition, I'm supporting the passage, passage of Measure E, so that the district will have the funds to install security cameras on campuses and expand the wrought iron fences that are much safer than the traditional chain link. I counted seven current board policies that address safety, weapons, gangs, bullying, conduct, and wellness of students. As a board member, these policies are the guidelines for keeping our children safe. Support is needed for our students' mental health to help be more successful in the classroom. The schools contract with agencies that provide mental and emotional, emotional support, and there are counselors on site, but they do take a lot of time and need extra support. There is a definite need in this area, and it's not just Lompoc. As a board member, I would advocate for additional resources to address student safety and the mental and emotional well-being of our students.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Straight.
Well, the reason for this question hits me right here. When I started teaching, we had fences, and that was to keep the kindergarteners in. Now, we're building them to keep everybody else out, so that, that hits me here. But we, as Gloria said, we do have rules and all that, which we are following. And one thing that's encouraging to me is, is the web program at Lompoc Valley Middle School, where students, that's, I forget what that stands for, "We Belong," where everyone belongs, okay, where the students all get together. And so, if there's a discipline problem, there's a group of students that talks with the student that's having the problem. I think we need more of that, and I've seen that in some elementary schools as well. And I think we, that process needs to be expanded, and I think we need more parent involvement and administrators, parents, and teachers all together, coming up with their best on how to handle the problems that we're facing. And we do have real, we've concentrated a whole lot on bullying over the last few years, and I think we're making great progress there. And so, that's basically my thoughts on the subject.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shuler-Jones.
Raise your hand if you've ever been in an active shooter drill with 30 kids in your classroom. It's not a lot of fun. Unfortunately, that's what our society has come to right now, but I don't think that we can be too lax on protecting our children at whatever cost. And I'm glad to see that we have funding becoming available, hopefully, to upgrade the security fencing and security cameras. But for me, the bigger picture is making sure that our curriculum enforces not only academic achievement, but also character traits like empathy, caring, sharing, and collaboration, and respect. Making sure that our staff, our teachers, and our administrators model that behavior to everyone. There are many programs in the elementary school, in the middle schools, and even in the high schools that address this issue, to bring children in, to help them develop character. It's something that's practiced daily in elementary school. It needs to be done more. I was very pleased to learn that in the LCAP, two behavioral specialists, two more behavioral specialists were hired to deal with some of the problems that our children are dealing with. If you've been in the classroom with the kids, you know there are things that teachers are not equipped to deal with. We need specialized help. And I, as a board member, that's something that I would want to see, is that there is more counseling, more group counseling, and more community support, and more parent outreach, more community outreach, to help these children in the trials that they're going through right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Skinner.
Measure E, Measure E, Measure E, Measure E, Measure E, Measure E. Do you get what I'm saying to you? It's just that simple. Measure E has outlined a very comprehensive security apparatus that's needed for all of our, our kids to be safe. It goes very much more in detail on basic repairs that need to happen, you know, at the, you know, you know, from elementary to middle school and high school. These repairs that, you know, really, our kids need in order to not even go to school, to possibly even be sick. There are some special issues that need to be addressed and, and so on and so forth. And it goes on and on and on. Currently, the Measure E is, is requested for $79 million, which is real, it's a shortfall. One of the statistics that was quoted to me that, that, you know, it kind of leaves me with my, my mouth just kind of dropped open, is there are 20 different school districts here in the County of Santa Barbara. Lompoc is the only one that hasn't passed a bond measure to improve its schools. We're it. Going back to the first question, why am I doing this? Really? We, we need to, you know, step up as a community. I didn't get to really do a whole lot of volunteering with my, my kids' teachers back then. I put through four or six kids and two more to go through the LUSD School, School District System, and we need this. Measure E, Measure E, Measure E.
Thank you. Mr. Monsieur. You can answer the question now.
The Board of Education has already done quite a bit to ensure safety, health, and welfare of our students, but there's a lot more that we can do. To ensure that the Lompoc Unified School District keeps its students safe and is supporting the mental and emotional well-being needs of students, the Board of Education needs to better design and implement the best safety program possible to counter the threat and respond to violence that could come. There are a number of different training institutes that can provide outstanding service to help our stu, our teachers and faculties provide safety to students with an active shooter instance. One of these is known as the Alice Training Institute, which prepares and plans for training, and is one of the several programs that our district needs to proactively handle the threat. We also need to get safety trained. Vern Sandborn of County Office of Education is the safety manager here, and there are some outstanding modules, I believe, teachers and faculty members, including classified employees, should enroll in these and become certified. The safety programs quite often are online, but they also provide for trainers to come into the district and help out. Our district cannot act alone in facing the challenges to school safety, so we must join together in unison or be possibly drowned out by the anguish of the inevitable. In regards to mental and emotional health, let me just say that we need to draw on the resources of other school districts in the county. Group activities, healthy relationships, girls' group, re- Group activities, healthy relationships, girls group, reach share, resolving conflicts, teen grief group, and SOX are some of those. I have a lot more to say about this issue, but I must cease.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so the third question, and we will start with Ms. Andrews on this one, and this is kind of a long question, so hang in there with me. This actually takes two slides. LUSD has as part of its mission statement that it will provide high-quality instructional programs and educational opportunities that challenge our students to maximize their learning and help them reach their full potential. Many of our students continue their post-secondary education at Allen Hancock College, and some students go directly into the military or into the workforce. However, many students aspire to attend a four-year college. According to the district report card from the last school year for which there are statistics, approximately 35% of LUSD graduates completed the required curriculum to be eligible for post-secondary education in California public colleges and universities. What information do you have regarding the actual number of students who apply to and attend either UC or Cal State directly out of LUSD high schools? How do you know if they are successful when they get there? What suggestions do you have to increase the number of students who complete the college prep curriculum and get accepted to UC or Cal State schools? Ms. Andrews.
All students should be offered every opportunity to reach their greatest potential with effective curriculum, instruction, and a wide range of course offerings. LUSD is failing to do that. LUSD reading curriculum and instruction is not just ineffective. Teaching sight words cripples the reading side of the brain. Phonics and only phonics is how the brain learns to read. Phonemes, distinct units of sound, date back 50,000 years to Africa. That means the brain is wired to learn how to read with phonics at birth. Sight words are taught in LUSD. Sight words train the brain to memorize word shapes, the picture side of the brain. The letters and sounds language side of the brain sleeps when sight words are taught. Between the ages of six and 10, the brain goes through a pruning process and eliminates underutilized neural connections. That means emphasis on sight words may cripple the child for life for reading proficiency. LUSD math curriculum and instruction is just as ineffective. LUSD uses Common Core Math. Watch the online documentary Building the Machine for a Grasp of the Catastrophe this poses for student achievement. The Foundation for Learning Math has not changed over centuries. Logical sequences, standard algorithms, and practice prepare the student for higher level math. A sound foundation in reading, writing, and math prepares students to make informed choices of a broad range of career options. College is but one, and was not a good fit for Bill Gates, Michael Dell, Ted Turner, and others. The ability to read, write, and do math well allowed them to pursue their dreams. Focus on that.
Okay, thank you.
There's also a copy of my article on reading in the back.
Thank you, Ms. Gravilla.
I do know that Allen Hancock has a 28% graduation rate and a transfer rate of 3.8%. I believe the schools are working to increase the number of students that complete college prep curriculum, and in turn, it helps more students get accepted by UC and CSU schools. The problem is that even if students are college-ready, it doesn't guarantee acceptance into those schools. That's why now so many kids are going to Hancock, and because their increased odds of getting into those schools occur when they partner with Hancock to begin with. Also, the Hancock Promise is there, so kids who are eligible to apply for a four-year school, they're not going because they can go to Hancock for free, and they don't have the student loans. So the number will decrease as long as that is available to them. We have advanced placement and Allen Hancock concurrent enrollment classes that help students earn college credit in high school to help them get ahead. The district has hired a college and career counselor to assist students, so there's an even higher rate of acceptance to universities. Having a counselor that can dedicate their time to our juniors and seniors to assist them is a step in the right direction. My suggestion for increasing the number of students who complete college prep curriculum starts at the elementary level. The district has a 67% of English learners homeless and foster youth that need extra support. English learners need that extra support to become fluent English so that by the time they get to high school, they can be mainstreamed into the college prep classes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Straight.
In my opinion, the whole purpose of our schools is to bring the next generation into our society and that they accept our values and that, and that's the single most important reason we have education. And then the second thing is, is I would hope that everyone that graduated from our schools would be prepared for whatever it is they want to do next, or, and that, whether that's the UC system or the California state system, or whether they're prepared to be a fireman or in the military or whatever. And I would hope that we would graduate citizens from our schools first and then give them the tools to be whatever it is they want to be. And a couple of years ago, we took our LCAP funds and put them to pay for students taking the SAT tests and also the pre-SAT tests, and we now, if there's these courses A through G that students have to have finished in order to go to the UC system or the Cal State system, and if they have a failing grade in any of those, they're obviously not eligible. Well, now, we have a deal where they can make up those A through G subjects during the summer through our Apex program, and they can do it online. Any rate, you know, not every single student needs to be, needs to go to college. If I look at the employees of our school district, I see all the maintenance workers and bus drivers and the classroom aides and all of that, and I think they need to be citizens, and so that's my goal.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shuler-Jones.
Well, when I first read this question, and it said 35% of our students were eligible to go on to UC and Cal State schools, I thought, that's pretty low considering they're graduating from high school. And my first thought was, what about the other 65%? What are they doing? How are we helping them? Why are they not eligible to go? And so I really, I didn't know how kids do after they graduate and after they go on to university. And knowing what I know from experience and having known children who go on, many of them don't stay at university for a variety of reasons. You know, there's sickness, illness in the family, they're, they miss their girlfriend, their boyfriend that they left back home. They don't feel prepared enough. And so I thought, how can this be? So I got in contact with one of the counselors at the high school, and I was happy to learn that the A to G program that Mr. Straight talked about, which are the qualifications that they need to have to be considered eligible to enroll in the universities, were being expanded. In that, in the A to G series, you have to have four years of math, four years of English, two years of foreign language, and the other requirements. If you don't start those processes early enough, you won't get the four years in. So there's been a concerted effort in the district to begin children at their freshman level, starting in those classes, so that they can go on and continue to be eligible. And she reported to me that this year, hopefully, instead of 35% being eligible, 50 to 60% were eligible, and even more, because they're pushing these programs, they want everyone to be able to at least qualify to have that option. The Promise Grant at Allen Hancock has taken a lot of children in for their two-year, you know, if you don't have to pay tuition, that's great. Also, paying for the PSATs and the SATs, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Skinner.
LUSD school district has a very unusually high number of students that fall into the, you know, the at-risk type of category. Now, with regard to being prepared to go to a four-year university, even at a 35%, you know, approval rate, there's a number of things that have to go on with that, whether or not that child wants to go on to a four-year university. There are so many different options out there right now for college that it's mind-boggling right now, especially going on with the computer. You don't even have to leave home to go ahead and enroll in, you know, a college that's going to give you a decent degree program to whatever course of study that you want to get involved in. So with regard to how that stacks up for LUSD, I think that right now, you know, the current administration has taken on a pretty good attack, if you will, on making sure that this, all of our kids, that 35% plus the 65% that are not there, have an opportunity to move on and achieve those goals that they're looking to achieve. Be that a four-year university, two-year, join the military, or just simply seek some employment, the number-one thing that we want to focus on is making sure that our kids are prepared for success.
Thank you, Ms. Muntzer.
Long Polk Unified School District needs to walk the talk in its mission statement. Many of the seniors who graduate from here simply aren't prepared for college and university study. When teachers ask seniors, how many of you plan to attend public colleges or universities after high school graduation, nearly every kid raises their hand in class. They all want to attain their dreams, but the sad reality is that nearly half fail or drop out. I saw this firsthand in teaching English at Allen Hancock for 15 years. Their skills and study habits are way too low. When you examine the LUSD website in pursuit of the local control accountability plan, LCAP, don't be surprised if you can't discern what levels and goals our children have attained. Talk to Tom Lamida, the Allen Hancock College Career Center counselor, Fatima Zarati, the Pioneer Valley High School College Coordinator, or Ms. Flores, the Cabrillo High School College and Career Readiness Counselor. They will all pretty much tell you the same thing. Education begins and ends each day at home. Don't be surprised when you learn that only about 35% of our children who start college actually graduate from there. This is roughly the same figure percentage-wise of students who complete and turn in their homework. No doubt, in my mind, there is a direct correlation between homework and college success. When a student picks up a book, solves real-life math problems, or writes stories for enjoyment at home, and parents show their love for learning, then the rate of success will rise. By the way, just a few years ago, my niece and nephew, Matt and Lisa Lardy, both graduated from Cabrillo High School, and both now have gone on to complete their PhDs. This is possible, folks, one in chemistry and the other in psychology. So please, parents, support your children.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Heath.
I hope that all our students achieve academically and prepare themselves to be good citizens, just like Mr. Straight said, and the importance is that they become good citizens and contribute to our society. It doesn't mean they have to go to the university, but they need to learn trades or enlist in the military, do things that are important. For those students that desire a higher education, I think it's important that we prepare them for this. The A to G subject requirements help prepare our students to go to higher universities and colleges. That curriculum requires a more rigorous and academically challenging content. There's substantial reading and writing and problem-solving that needs to be developed. It encourages analytical thinking, learning, and factual content. It encourages the development of oral and listening skills. In trying to get statistics, I got some from Cabrillo. 17% of the students at Cabrillo High School in 2018 went to a four-year college while 61% went to community college. In 2017, 27% went to a four-year college while 49% went to community college. How do we measure success? Well, I wasn't sure how to find that out, so I polled my kids that have graduated from Cabrillo, and I found that there's been a lot of success. Among those that I know and that my children know, they've graduated from UC Irvine, UC Riverside, UCSB, UCLA, Harvard, and other universities, Cal State schools as well. They've, some are in medical school, some are physician's assistants, others have PhDs in neuropsychology and other areas. One student that graduated from LUSD was a student body president at San Diego State University. So I think we've had success in our schools. We can improve by making sure they meet the A through G requirements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, and this is the fourth question, and Ms. Gravilla, you'll start this question, The purpose of the California Healthy Youth Act, California Education Code Sections 51930 through 51939, is to provide every student with the knowledge and skills necessary to protect their sexual and reproductive health from unintended pregnancy, HIV, and STIs. How will you make sure all schools in the district are following this state mandate regarding the California Healthy Youth Act of 2016 as outlined in the California Department of Education Official Letter of April 5th, 2018? Okay, thank you.
Board meetings are one way that parents can come and share their thoughts and opinions, and they did so a month ago. And based on their input, the district implemented 10 task force meetings where parents can review a variety of materials and give their feedback. As a board member, I think it's important to listen to parents in the community and then work collaboratively with them and the district to make sure all laws are followed while giving parents the opportunity for feedback. Only the middle and secondary schools are required to offer the curriculum. The California Healthy Youth Act requires the parents of students to be notified of the curriculum at the beginning of each school year. It also requires that the district give the parents the right to opt out of that curriculum. This is a sensitive and delicate topic, so we need to engage all our stakeholders and then proceed. We have a responsibility to follow the legal guidelines and to balance that with what is best for our kids. The board policy reflects this requirement, and as a board member, I would support and uphold the law and the policy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Straight.
Now, this was a hot topic at the board meeting a while back. There is a law which Ms. Gravilla pretty well summarized, and it must be age-appropriate and medically accurate, and that's the law. And the law is, is that it must be taught, and so what she said, I agree with wholly. I think the parents need to be completely involved in this and need to go through the materials and know what it is that's being taught to their children, and that, and they have the right to opt out. The first part of the law says it has to begin in junior high school, middle school, so seventh grade, basically, and it must be taught once more in high school. And parents have to be notified, and I intend to follow the law. Parents have to be notified and exactly what it is that's being taught, and they have the option to back out of it, or that, and that the teachers or any outside speakers must have training and knowledge and the most recent medically accurate research on the topic. And teaching must be appropriate for all the students there, and basically, you know, as a school board member, I'm to represent my community, you people, and so I'm here to listen to what your input is on this subject. And I thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shuler-Jones.
Thank you guys for giving the background, because now I don't have to do that. There was quite an outpouring of parental questioning at the last school board meeting, and that's the job of the board, is to listen to parents and that's the job of the board, is to listen to parents' issues that they might have over a certain subject. And I think that the board listened and studied a new curriculum and are offering chances for the parents to review the curriculum, which is what needs to be done. This has to be offered. It's mandated. So, on the board, you have to uphold the law. You have to follow the law with it. And I think the important part is finding a curriculum that matches what the messages that we need to get across to our children, that talks about respecting sexual orientation. It needs to be age-appropriate and medically accurate. And they need also to, they talk about the skills that you need to develop, healthy relationships, and make healthy decisions about sexuality. This is something that parents do. This is, and I think a lot of parents have a very difficult time to do that. You know, it's not easy to talk to your kids sometimes. And I think what happens in seventh grade and ninth grade, they're being taught the facts. They're being taught, you know, in school, not from the kids on the playground, or not what somebody else is trying to tell them. And it's up to the parents to also speak to them during that time and tell them, "These are our values. This is what, you know, this is how we feel about the subject," and have an open discussion with their children. So I think this really opens up the opportunity for children to, you know, ask their parents' questions and, you know, just out of the blue. It's like, "Oh, we're studying this in school. What do you think about?" And having the parents have a way to instill in their children what they believe. And yes, they do have the right to opt out, which is important for some people, but I think they need to learn it and learn it correctly in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Skinner.
Well, I guess there is a nerve that can be struck with the LUSD parent to get folks really, really engaged in things. September 11th, that school board meeting, you guys put it mildly, that was hot. That, folks showed up for that, right? Why did they show up? Because of that curriculum, that everybody decided to go ahead and take a pick. But I think that was probably some of those 35%-ers, parents, that showed up, right? And I'm gonna kind of throw you, Long Polk School District, not the administration, but the parents, I'm gonna throw y'all under the bus. You're getting thrown under the bus because you're not doing what you need to do. You're not doing it, all right? It's just this simple. Hey, look, you know, kids are gonna do what they're gonna do. Yeah, true enough. Loving parents are gonna have, you know, some, you know, some strong conversations with their kids, but right now, on this subject, this whole thing being thrown down to us from the state, it's easy to say that that's the excuse, but you need to get engaged if you want to change that law. That needs to change. If you are not gonna do it, these folks are gonna come tell you how to do it. That's really, if you want that to happen, that's what's gonna happen. Get engaged. Another thing here is getting, you know, decent teachers in the classroom. And, you know, one of the things that the district has been doing is taking tours, getting tours of all our schools. I'm gonna go back to this subject here real quick, because it's important. You have to get engaged. Go on the tours. It's sad, the number of parents that are showing up to go on these tours. It's sad. Absolutely just pathetic. Get engaged.
Thank you. Mr. Monserr.
The Healthy Youth Act is a comprehensive sexual health education mandate, which is required by secondary schools, both middle schools and high schools, to provide every student with the knowledge and skills necessary to protect their sexual and reproductive health from unintended pregnancies, human immunodeficiency virus, HIV, and sexually transmitted infections. We have been teaching this subject matter in our secondary schools for over two decades, but there have been upgrades in the requirements. It isn't taught in our elementary schools, nor is it required to be taught by the state. Here again, it's your responsibility, parents, to teach your children the vital lessons of life and to preserve and protect the health of your families. Teachers can't do it all, and they're trying really hard, overtime, to do a big job. I would, as your newly-elected board member, make sure this Healthy Youth Act is followed through site visitation, observations, and personal contact with counselors and students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Heath.
The letter that was referred to when it regards, regarding parent notification, says this: Passive, in bold letters, not active, not active, parent or guardian notification is required. This curriculum is nothing short of indoctrination and the sexualization of our children. So, I would encourage all parents to opt out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready for question number... Oh, I'm sorry. We're not ready. We're ready for you. Okay, Ms. Andrews.
Again, Deb Andrews. The Healthy Youth Act provides an opportunity for instruction in biology, physiology, and pathology at age-appropriate levels of complexity. How the body functions, disease transmission, strategies to stay healthy, practices to promote healthy living, and a long, active life. Use facts and research to share the value of maturity for life-altering decisions. Research shows best practices for raising healthy, well-adjusted children includes an intact family. Emphasize the biological purpose to copulate is for procreation. Last summer, I reviewed the LUSD seventh-grade sexuality education curriculum. It basically promoted grooming children for sex. It would create perpetrators and victims. Keeping children healthy does not require instruction in anal sex, oral sex, vaginal sex, or mutual masturbation. Coincidentally, California state officials have reclassified a number of crimes from violent to nonviolent. Among them, human trafficking of a child, abducting a minor for prostitution, rape by intoxication, rape of an unconscious person, felony sexual penetration, sodomy or oral copulation with drugs if the victim is unconscious. That list of crimes are no longer violent, they're nonviolent in California. It begs the question, why does the Healthy Youth Act ignore the science of health, favoring instead to marinate youth in pornography, at the same time the state discriminate, decriminalizes sex crimes? The science is available to promote healthy youth. We should focus on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and now we'll come to the final question, and this, Mr. Straight, you will start this question, okay? Ready? Okay, this isn't hard. This is. In your campaigning so far, what are the two most pressing concerns of the teachers and the students? And how would you propose to address these concerns?
You caught me. One of the most pressing concerns is safety on the campuses, and as I said, I think that we need to be more open and meet with members of the community and that. And that's also a concern of students, and it's also a concern of parents. And I think what I said a while ago about students getting together and being influences on other students and counseling their fellow students is a great idea. And to involve parents and teachers in that same process, and that, to me, is a single concern, but it's the biggest one, and it's coming from throughout the school district. And, you know, I told you before, I hate to see these fences going up and cameras and talk about having to ID people as they come on campus and all that, but that's where it is, and that is a concern, and that's one of mine, too.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Schuler-Jones.
I'm in contact with a lot of teachers, because I'm recently retired, and most of my friends are still working, and I spend a lot of time in the classroom. I substitute teach, so I'm in the classroom frequently. And I think the two basic issues right now that teachers are experiencing is, one, a lack of communication between the school site and the district office, and a feeling of not being involved in decision-making. They're told to do different things, they're mandated to do things, and sometimes it's, they feel like they don't have any input. They're not being respected as professionals, and that's a huge issue. The second one would be, well, I'm kind of torn if I have to pick two, but right now, I know many, many teachers are upset, many parents are upset, because of class size reduction. Classes have been switched around the first couple of weeks of school. Many of the classes are over the limit, and children have been pulled out of, you know, a class that they've been in for two weeks and given to another teacher, and that's a real issue for teachers. It upsets the entire campus, it upsets the children, it's been a huge issue. I know it probably doesn't sound like it's that big of an issue to other people, but let me tell you, being on the campus and talking to those teachers that have to change from teaching kindergarten to fourth grade and moving their classrooms and not knowing the curriculum and the new grade level, you know, it's like changing your job from being a rocket scientist to, I don't know, working in a quarry or something. It's so different. It's totally different. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skinner.
All right. On the teacher's side, it would be security issues with regard to, you know, that's already been mentioned by a couple of other candidates. We need to get, you know, structural items in place, i.e., Measure E, Measure E, Measure E. From a child's perspective, I think the number-one concern on the student's side is bullying. You have to talk with your kids when they come home from school. Help them out. Self-esteem issues are a really big issue. If you go into school and you're afraid of whomever you're gonna be, you know, whatever bully you're gonna be running up against, that's gonna affect what information gets retained, how they're gonna test on tests, and so on and so forth. Help them out. Again, parents get involved. It starts, yeah, you know, it's gonna be real tough, you know, type of a conversation to have with your little one. If your little one is going through a bullying situation, go ahead and give the school a call, because, you know, quite honestly, they're set up for it. They're ready to tackle this issue. However, a lot of situations go undiagnosed. Talk with them. Talk with them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Monserr.
We're all individuals. Children and teachers, students and teachers, they have different concerns from day to day. We have to, as teachers, look across the room at 35 students, that each one of them have a different thing happening in their life. But really, from the teacher viewpoint, we have to provide enthusiastic lessons that kids come to enjoy learning, because that's the key to education, the love of learning. And we need to reach out to these kids, your children, and help resolve the problems. We also need to create more than just counselors in the head office to provide service that they need concerning their own particular issue. There's a lot of support that can be gotten from a cumulative effort of students around them. Their friends are probably some of the most influential people in their lives. And those students, when they come together in some of these support groups that I talked about, that other districts around us have and we don't, then they can come together and help resolve their issues, and will feel more as a group to come to their teacher and tell them, "Mr. Monserr, I'm hungry. I didn't have breakfast this morning." You also need to look at the demographics of our district. We have about 65% of our kids out here that speak Spanish, and we need to see the issues that they have and create ongoing help for them in particular. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Heath.
First issue we'd like to address is the mental and emotional well-being of our students. In my office, when I have a student come in, I often ask him, "How was school today?", or "What activities are you involved in?". It always makes me sad when they don't do anything but go to school. They need to have something like sports, or music, or theater, or the aquarium, or the mini, or ag, or any of the other wonderful programs that our district has to offer to help build their mental and emotional well-being. I think it's really important that we encourage that type of activity with our teenagers. The second pressing concern has to do with morale of our teachers. I was in some traffic over the weekend, and I saw a bumper sticker that said, "Respect our teachers. They deserve it." I think there's a challenge we have within our district regarding the morale of our teachers. We need to uphold them and help them and help them feel like they're valued. Teachers love to educate and to teach our kids. They love our kids. They, our teachers are admired by our kids. We need to make sure they feel respected, honored, and that we pay attention to them in a very, very, a very elevated way. Those are two topics, I think, that are pressing most to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Andrews.
Obviously, I think effective curriculum and instruction are the most important thing. I think schools need to get back to basics. This is not a local problem. This is a national problem. Our schools are in trouble, and it reflects in our nation. California is worse than most. I think California's about 48 out of 50 states. We need to get back to basics. We need to adopt effective curriculum, especially for reading and math. We need to improve training of teachers so they have effective instructional training, so they can make a difference with those kids in the classroom. Lord knows, that's why they're there. They enjoy teaching, but having curriculum that is not self-paced for the child, it's not effective to teach reading and math, cripples their ability to be effective in that classroom. It affects behaviors in the classroom. It affects parental involvement. Parents don't get involved with schools when they're so unhappy with what's going on in schools. We need to take our schools back. And I'll double back, double down on what Mr. Heath, Dr. Heath, had said. We need to take our schools back. If the curriculum isn't any good and we're told from on high what we should be using, we should just say, "No. We're individuals. We're a separate town. We're not sheep. If the reading curriculum doesn't work, we don't use it. If the math curriculum doesn't work, we don't use it. If they're trying to shove down our throats that we should introduce pornography to our children, we're not going to do it. We're going to say no, and there are ways to do that. You don't have to go along with laws that go against the Constitution. It's called nullification. There are a lot of things that we can do to get out of this."
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Gralva.
I have to say, student achievement. The CASP scores came out today, and we know that they were not as well as we may have expected, so I think our teachers want to know, "How do we help our kids? How do we help our parents help our kids?". Those are the things that, it's an ongoing struggle. And the other part of it in the student's side is the, just like Dr. Heath said, the emotional well-being of our children. They need help, they need support, and it's not just struggles they have at home for the foster youth, the English learners. Children, and teenagers especially, have a lot of crisis, and it could be a number of issues that might not seem a big deal to us, but it is to them, and that hinders their learning in school. And so, I think that that would be the big concern for them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think I got everybody, right? Okay. Okay, so now it's time to give them a hand, okay? And before we break... And before we break for just a few minutes, not any more than 10, okay? So hopefully you have your questions already written out. So write them on a three-by-five card, bring them up here, and Lorraine and Janet and Sandal help, and we'll put them all together and we'll start asking questions. You can address it to one candidate in particular, or to all of them, and no more than two minutes to answer, and no rebuttals, and we'll see how many we can get. So, okay, let's take a break. Do you have a question? Go ahead. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Sorry, that was such a short intermission, but we have some good questions here. Right, right. And several questions are the same, so we won't ask it seven times, we'll just ask it once, right? Right?
Thank you for your active participation. We've got lots of questions.
Right, yes. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes. Okay, so here's what we're going to do. We're going to shorten the answer to a minute, so we get more questions in instead of two minutes. And we need to save about, you know, we have one-minute closing, so we have to save seven minutes for the closing, right? Okay. So this, these questions will be mostly to all the candidates? Okay. So the first one, and we will start with Ms. Shuler-Jones. How do you, do you support Measure E? If no, why? If yes, why?
Good question. I'm one person, I'm one vote. I've lived in these classrooms that are rusted with black widows and all kinds of things. We are in need of changes. I just want to make sure we're not in a position to have to do this again sometime. We need to maintain the facilities that we have, they need to be upgraded. I've lived there, I know. You know, the filthy carpets, it's, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Skinner.
Yes.
I had a feeling you'd say that.
And 1955 to 1960 is when the schools were constructed. You do the math. Do you think we are entitled to go ahead and update these things, or not? I mean, some of you went through these schools yourselves. I mean, all of my kids have gone through. I've got two more to go. I've got one in middle school and one that is about to go, start school shortly. But part of the self-esteem problem is if you're going into a school that feels good, smells good, that you have a good comfortable breeze, is the atmosphere set for learning? Right now, we're in deficit. We're in big damn deficit. Parents, get involved.
Okay. Mr. Monsir.
As I peruse through the community and talk to people in my neighborhood, and I am a homeowner, the big complaint from homeowners, and that's really the group that are not supporting Measure E, is that they want to see more bang for the buck. If we can do more as a school district to complement our progress and to do more, I think that we would have a lot more support. We need to have the money. We need to have better schools. We need at least to have what other districts in our county have. And when you go to Santa Maria and look at Pioneer Valley, or even down to Santa Barbara, Longpoke Unified School District used to have the finest school district in the county. We don't anymore. We need the money.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Heath.
So, I want to make it clear, I don't speak on behalf of the board, but I do not support Measure E for lots of reasons. I don't think I can elaborate on all of them, but some of them are, the public has already voted this bond down twice. I respect the votes of the public. It is a prolonged tax. It's advertised as not increasing the tax, but when you prolong a tax until 2054, I think it's a tax increase. Part of it, it's a lot of money that we entrust to people to spend, and I think there is a contingency that questions those that will be spending it, and I'm one of those. I don't doubt that we need to improve our schools. I think we need to look at other methods to raise the money or use the money we already have more wisely. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Andrews.
I don't support Measure E. We are not teaching reading, math, and other subjects effectively in our schools. It's very expensive not to serve the learning needs of children. If we served the learning needs of children and had more effective curriculum and instruction, we would have lots of money left over to maintain the schools, which we are not doing now, they are not maintained. As I said earlier, I have personal experience with this. We lived in a very wealthy district, had beautiful buildings. The curriculum was terrible. We moved to a poor district that had no money for extras. The buildings were beautifully maintained, they were built in the 50s, and my son started college half-days at 13. Not that everyone has to do that, but some children want to, and they should be able to with effective curriculum and instruction.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Grahava.
First of all, I am a homeowner, and I support the bond. I think it's an important measure to update our schools. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for this question, but I know there is research that shows that students thrive in an environment that is welcoming and safe. In my current position, I do have the responsibility of bond accountability, so I am familiar with oversight committees and what's responsible as far as being accountable to the bond. I also have the privilege of being in a district where the children get to see the results of a school that is upgraded and modernized and welcoming for them to come to school. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Straight.
I am in favor of the bond. I am also a homeowner. I just got thinking, last spring, our house was built about 1962, so it's about the same age as the schools. Last spring, we spent over more than what we paid for our house to bring it up to current, and you can't tell the difference by looking from the outside, so, you know, point made. The other thing that's gone on is all the new technology. Our classrooms only have, you know, like, two electrical outlets and need tons more. Every child now has a computer. We add a wire for Wi-Fi, and then we have all the safety things that have been mentioned before, so that to take care of all of those, I'm in favor of it. As a homeowner, I don't mind paying for it.
Okay. And... You started. Okay. Okay, next question. What are your thoughts regarding reaching out to the Hispanic community to promote more parent participation and to support our English learners? And we'll start with Mr. Skinner.
My thoughts are simple. It would be the same as if they spoke English. An outreach program is an outreach program is an outreach program. I'm going to back up here a minute and go back to the tours here for a minute. There's an active phone number for every kid that's in the district. 10,000 phone calls made for tours. First tour, 10 parents show up. Second tour, five parents show up. Look, we probably need to have an outreach for, you know, just for all our English-speaking folks, you know? I mean, participation, participation, participation. Come out, help your kid.
Okay. Mr. Monsir.
When you look on the cover of Teaching Tolerance, you see the barbed wire around the chair, the school-to-deportation pipeline. Ladies and gentlemen, we speak Spanish in my home. We need to be proud of our cultures, we need to celebrate diversity, we need to provide inclusion rather than exclusion. This is one of the problems that Latino learners have, is that they don't feel like they belong as much as they would like to. I know this for a fact. We need to bring them in, bring the parents, the parents in, the psych councils, ELAC, DLEC. We need to have these groups be as vocal as all these white faces I see out here. How do we do it? With tolerance and compassion.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Heath.
In my church, I'm responsible for a self-reliance initiative that encompasses Santa Barbara, Carpinteria, Longpoke, and solving. And one of the key components of self-reliance has to do with, you know, lots of things, but one of the focuses is English learning. If we want to raise the self-reliance of our English learners, we need to help them learn English well. And in our schools, I think it's important that we cater to that population, because it's a big aspect, a big component of our students. So I think we're making those efforts. They need to be included in everything and encouraged to participate on a high level and not let language be a barrier. But also, it's important that we teach them English. That's the only way they're going to raise their level of self-reliance. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Andrews.
I've been in this long time, I've seen it. When you have effective curriculum and instruction in your schools and children are achieving well and early, you have parents coming out of the woodwork, you have volunteers, you have parents wanting to do anything they can to help you because they're so happy with what's going on in school. When their children are having problems in schools, they feel like they're not being listened to in schools, they fall back, they drop away, they don't want to have anything to do with schools. So it has a lot to do with that relationship, and it all centers around learning, or should center around learning. I don't think any one group should be elevated over another. I think each child, regardless of race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic level, should be offered effective curriculum and instruction to achieve their greatest potential.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Grahava.
I think I've talked about this before. We have to figure how to help our parents help the children. So my thoughts on that are, speak to them. One of the concerns that I have heard is the Spanish-speaking parents want to know, who can they call, who can they talk to? So be visible. So be visible, be out there, let them know that you're there to help them, let them know there is support. I just know from past practice that one way to get parents out is, is have food. You know, they work long days, they, they don't want to come home and have to make dinner and then go to a meeting at school, so provide, provide some meals and let them come and have some workshops and give them the information and the communication, let them know that we're there for them, we want to support them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Straight.
I think it's important for us to get together with the parents, and that's most important. The learning of English is so important in our schools, as part of what I, my opening statements was, is we're, we're trying to raise this next generation into what is now our society and our culture, and in order to learn about it, they have to learn about it in English because it's written in English. So that, to me, is very important. And what's going on at Halfgood School and Clarence Ruth for Two that, that I've observed is, is when they have open houses and that, it's, it is open house, and it, and it's a, a whole community there, and it, it touches me, and we need more of that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shuler-Jones?
We struggle with this problem at Fillmore School often, and we search for ways to include people that didn't feel like they could be part of the school, they didn't have practice, they felt alienated in a way, and we came up with a lot of different programs. And I don't see why, as a school board, we could help support the different school sites to establish, you know, when they have their FELAC meetings, they, people come and there's things for the children to do, and they're welcomed. We noticed there were a group of moms who would drop their kids off at school and then hang around and talk to each other. It's like, we invited them in, we opened up a classroom, we said, here are ways you can help your teachers. We would, as teachers, send things that needed to be cut out or things to do, anything to involve the parents in a way that allowed them to participate so they didn't feel like they were not a part of, and include them as much as possible. We would have dinners at night where we would have, you know, how to help your parent, how to read to your children, PTA reading nights, things like that, anything to include the parents.
Okay, thank you. Okay. One more question, then we're going to go to the closing statements. How will you, as a school board member, work with teachers on improving student test scores? And we'll start with Ms. Mozzair.
To improve test scores, you've got to improve education in the classroom. It's the student that's being tested, not the parent. Parent support will, will help a great deal. It'll give the children confidence that their parents are lifelong learners. They need this example. When you go home at night, work with your children on their homework. Talk to them about what they did in school. Have them provide feedback. This will gain academic success, and it will enhance their love to learn. That's really the key to success in education.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Heath.
I think we need to listen to our teachers. I'd like to share an experience. A few years ago, I was approached by some science teachers in our district. They were concerned that the curriculum at Cabrillo had to be the same at Lompoc. I listened, I advocated for the teachers at Cabrillo that their science curriculum could be implemented. They'd worked hard on it. I believe as a result of that meeting with the teachers and listening to them and taking those concerns to the district administration, things were changed, so the science department at Cabrillo is elevated, and they have some unique programs there in their science department. It doesn't mean that the same thing can't help it at Lompoc. So, listening to the teachers, advocating for them when things don't seem to be going their way is really important as a board member.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Andrews.
Increasing test scores is a real problem if your curriculum isn't very good. Also, the system's been corrupted, they have aligned, the test, testing oftentimes is Common Core standards and Common Core math, it all is intertwined together, and neither one of them's any good. So I think you first have to have effective curriculum, and you have to have standardized testing. I, I would recommend Iowa Test of Basic Skills that we used to have years ago. That was a valid measure of student achievement. So what, when you talk about increasing test scores, what are you talking about? Getting the children up to speed with Common Core math that doesn't really teach, teach them much, but they get good scores on the Common Core test? It's, it's a big question, it's a very important question, but you have to have effective curriculum and valid measure.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Grahava.
I think it's important to, to listen and hear the concerns from teachers as far as test scores. Encourage them to review the data and encourage them to work with their administrators and their sites and their colleagues to collaborate on what works and what doesn't. Definitely, when you have the data, you can look and see certain students are going to do better. Dig deeper. Why? Just, and, and help them or encourage them to do that. As a board member, I don't see my role as someone who would enforce a, a policy, or, I'm sorry, a, any kind of a program or curriculum. I, that's why we have principals and directors to, to plan and coordinate that across the district. We're just there to support them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Straight.
Having taught a good part of my life, I think I have an empathy for the teachers, and, and I think my job as a school board member is, is to support them and be positive and, you know, and show them how much I appreciate them, and, and that's one of my big jobs as a school board member, and I try to get out and visit schools and sites and tell teachers how much I appreciate what they're doing, and I think that's the best way to bring production up. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shuler-Jones?
As teachers know, test scores do not show the true value of a student. There's been so much pressure on improving test scores and doing what we can to show that there is improvement. When we made the switch to Common Core, there were a lot of changes in how we did testing, how we were changing the way students thought and approached questions and problem-solving. It was much more in-depth, it was a total, depth, it was a total change in how we taught. We had to restructure how to have those children be successful with lots of practice and lots of hands-on materials, but I think improving test scores goes to the very core, to the very basics that we have to do. We have our list of objectives, every student, teacher has. You, the way that you get those across, the way that you teach those, not every child learns the same way. You have to present them in ways that children will learn them and, and be able to do well on a test.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Skinner.
Listening to the teachers is one thing. However, you need to have teachers that have the talent. And right now, recruiting the real talent for Lompoc is down because they don't want to come to these facilities. And if you don't make that improvement, we were talking about, you know, a moment ago about the whole thing of, you know, there we go with that Measure E thing again, you know, you need to improve the, the classroom environment. That, from a security standpoint, from a, a learning standpoint, that alone really kind of boosts that right type of learning atmosphere. That, in turn, is a recruiting tool for the right kind of talent. If you're competing with Santa Maria, we lose. They come and tour these schools, I don't want to work here. I, I'll go on after Santa Maria and do that because they have a, a much more of a feel and a, and a, and a nice learning environment. Measure E.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, there are so many good questions here, I wish we had more time, because I think the questions from the audience are always so interesting. But it's time for our closing statements. So we are going to begin with Ms. Shuler-Jones and come this way with the closing statements. Okay, you're on.
Vote for me, vote for me, vote for me. I don't know what to say. I'm retired teacher, I've given my life to teaching and to children, and this is my way of giving back. I'm going to cry, no, I can't cry. It's something I'm very passionate about, and I want to be there to listen to the people at the site, the people that are doing the job day in and day out, the teachers, the custodians, all those people have valuable information. They're all teachers at a school site, from the lunch lady to the office clerks to the librarians, they are all teachers at our school. We need to have them heard, their needs addressed, to make them happy so that they can educate our children in a way that is productive and helpful and joyful. I mean, we, we have to put the joy back in teaching. It's just not there right now, I'm afraid. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Straight.
I think I'd ask for your vote. Vote based a lot on my experience, which has been my whole life, has had to do with education. I think I've proven myself as a leader. My fellow board members have elected me thirteen times over the years as president. I serve as president of the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association, which is made up of members of all twenty school districts in the county. I've been on the executive boards of the YMCA, Lions, Elks, the GI Forum. I'm on the executive board of the Education Foundation, I've been Little League and Babe Ruth. I've participated as foster parents at our house, and I would like to continue what I've been doing and help to represent you. By the way, my number's in the phone book.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Grahava.
I think my education and experience brings a lot to the table because I am not necessarily in the classroom. We have plenty of teachers on the board. I think that I'm on the other side of it, I'm a classified employee, but it would be a great honor for me to be the first Hispanic woman on the board, elected to the board. But I also represent the single mom, the working mom, the college reentry student, and I think that as a board member, I would be a valuable asset, and I'm there for the kids.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Andrews.
Twenty years ago, I received a legal and threatening cease-and-desist letter from that wealthy Omaha district ordering me to stop telling the truth about school. I did not comply. Experience suggests union control of education is analogous to court-sanctioned terrorism. I can attest to that. I witnessed union control of the education legislation and rule-making process as well as the votes for passage. I had a seat at the table, I saw it. I garnered thirty-eight percent of the vote for Oregon State Superintendent of Public Instruction. That position is no longer elected, it's now appointed. For six years, I wrote an online column for examiner.com examining schools. My column was often number one in the nation for that category. That whole site went dark. Vote for me, Deb Andrews, for school board. I will never back down. I will not be silenced. I will never give up the fight to save our children and our nation.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Heath.
It's been an honor to serve the last four years as a school board member, and I seek your vote to continue on for two more years. If you look at my record, I'll vote my conscience, I'll vote what I think is right, even when it's against what everybody else says. So if you want a voice on the board that's going to question what goes on, that's going to look at it from a different perspective, I'd appreciate your vote. I think you have a lot of good candidates to choose from. And again, it's been an honor, and thank you for your attendance, and look forward to serving two more years if elected. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mozzair.
There's a couple of things that I didn't have an opportunity to answer and respond to. One of them in regard to Title IX is, is that I did coach girl sports, three girl sports, cross-country track and, and basketball. I also have learned a great deal from experiences of all the students that I've had. For over thirty-five years in teaching, in the classroom, I'm a veteran, I'm a professional, and I try to bring the very best out of my, out of my students, and out of the parents as well. You're going to vote in about a month, place three of us on the, the board. These are good candidates. I do ask that you examine, compare, and contrast our education, our experience, and our dedication to our children and community in making your choices. I'm sure you will. I hope you will. It should be clear by the time of the election. Whoever is elected must also be committed to diversity, equity, and justice for each and every child within our community. Thank you for coming, and thank you for improving our schools and for helping students navigate the complexities of our time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Skinner.
I'd like to thank, well, Ms. Owens, the AAW, all of you that came out to attend for listening to us go on on how we would act and, and, and basically adjudicate our needs and thoughts as school board members for Lompoc Unified School District. I too am an homeowner, and yes, I'm making a final plug for Measure E. If you want a little bit more about my perspective and the issues on where I stand, check out my website. I'd love to hear from you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. I want to thank you, the audience, for being a great audience. Every time we do a forum, we have a great audience. So, that's just Lompoc, right? I think that's just Lompoc. So thank you very much for coming, and be sure to vote now on November sixth. Good night.